Let's rise for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the November fourteenth Fisher City Council meeting. We have a presentation. I know Chris, would you kick it off?
Sure. Thank you, Council President, gentlemen, members of the council. As a reply on Veterans Day, I wanted to take a moment here to recognize a special member of our community. Many of you know George Shavraplis, many of you know his story, thanks in large part to Councilmember Draymer on... Should I say this on?
I thought it was.
You can all hear him.
You're coach now, Chris, so you can, you know, you've got a loud voice. Just use it. Do we need to go back to the pledge?
Trey. Got it?
Start with the light.
Awesome. Let's start over again here. So, as I was saying, most of us are fortunate to know George and his incredible story in large part to Councilmember Draymer and getting to know George over the years, it's certainly been a pleasure, learning his story and learning about the incredible things that he's done for our country. On November fourth, George was one of fifteen nominees inducted into the Indiana Military Veterans Hall of Fame. It's an accomplishment among several accomplishments for George and his life of service dedicated to our country. There was a nice fan club from the city of Fishers there to support George, made up of our administration, Mayor Fatness, Chief Gephardt, Chief Arusa, members of the council, members of the City of Fishers Armed Services Commission to support George. So I know Brad would like to say a few words here on behalf of the city, but George from our administration, thank you. Thank you for all the, your dedicated service to our country, but also thank you to your service to our community and your continued service on the Armed Services Commission and just being there for our administration whenever we need you. So thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
I had to make the bold so I can read it. Britton Falls resident, as Chris said, George Shavraplis was inducted into the Indiana Military Veterans Hall of Fame on November fourth. George was raised in California with parents who had both served in World War II. George was the oldest of five kids and wanted to be a doctor, so he thought starting with the military would be a good way to get there. Out of high school, he joined the Navy to become a hospital corpsman in nineteen sixty-five. He did his training at San Diego while after his training, he volunteered thirteen times to go to Vietnam. Finally, they honored his request, attached him to the Marines as a corpsman, and was sent to Vietnam April twenty-third, nineteen sixty-seven, to serve with the first platoon, Company C, First Battalion, Ninth Marines, Third Marine Division. The very next day in country, on April twenty-fourth, they went out to check out a village, found nothing. As George was returning to the helicopter, he was hit with a sniper shot in his leg, his first Purple Heart. After recovering for five days, because you don't keep George down, he returned to his unit. A few weeks later, on May fourteenth, nineteen sixty-seven, in checking out a church courtyard, George was hit with shrapnel in the back and both legs that he still deals with today, his second Purple Heart. On July second, nineteen sixty-seven, George was shot two times, shrapnel in both legs, then shot in the knee. He kept working as a corpsman to help his troops, then he was shot in the shoulder. He continued to give instructions while laying on the ground to helping the other wounded, his third and fourth Purple Hearts. He did not want to leave his troop, but he's finally ordered out to a field hospital. He spent two and a half months in Cameron Bay Air Force Hospital and then three months at Camp Q Army Hospital in Okinawa, back to the United States for six more months at Bethesda Hospital in Washington DC. George was presented with a Presidential Silver Star by General Louis Walt in October of nineteen sixty-eight. He finished his four years tour of duty in June nineteen sixty-nine, discharged as an E-five hospital corpsman, second class, with four Purple Hearts, Vietnamese Cross of Gallantry, and a Silver Star. Back in California, he began his career with Newport Beach Police Department, becoming a good friend of John Wayne. If you want to take him out for drinks, he'll tell you a lot of stories about John Wayne. He later started his own fraud investigating firm and moved to Indiana in two oh-three and continued with fraud investigating. George moved into Britton Falls when I met him in two oh-nine, being active in veterans' groups and other activities. George is a member of the newly organized Fishers Armed Services Commission, which we have some in attendance. George has been honored by being selected to lay the wreath at the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier at Arlington National Cemetery in November of two sixteen. He was a participant on the Honor Flight to Washington DC in April two oh-seventeen with Britton Falls resident Ron Mile, his guardian. George worked with me and our group to raise the money to install the Gold Star Family Memorial in front of Fisher City Hall in May of two thousand twenty-one. Like many Vietnam veterans, George has dealt with many health issues, he's in a hospital three or four times a year, but never complains about what he has endured to protect the freedom of our country. Thank you, George.
Thank you just doesn't seem strong enough, does it? I mean, there's, there's no way to repay that, so all I know to say is thank you deeply. Appreciate it. Moving on to lighter things, Finance Committee report. John, you want to go ahead?
George, this is a tough act to follow, so any of it, I'll do my best. Congratulations, great to see you. Finance Committee met last Wednesday. A few items on the agenda that came forward for recommend for approval. On the regular agenda, item eight, Andretti Auto Sports Financing, item nine, ninety-six and Allisonville Financing, item ten, Rev Financing, as well as Budget Financial Annual General Obligation on item twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Onto item six, Health Department Report. Once again, every month you can find the updated Health Department Report on our website. Moving on to Consent Agenda, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion by John. Second by Selena. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, Consent Agenda passes. Moving on to item eight, zero nine one nine two two E.
Good evening, Council. Megan Baumgartner, the Director of Community and Economic Development. I'm taking on a couple of other little roles tonight and doing some of our bond financing. So our first item is for the Andretti Global Headquarters Project. If Council recalls in August, Council unanimously approved the Economic Development Agreement with Andretti Global for the construction of their new corporate headquarters and museum. The city committed at that time to issue economic development revenue bonds that would be purchased by the developer and no obligation for the city with the repayment. The proceeds of that new project will be what pays for the, sorry, let me rephrase that. The new tax increment will be the revenue that pays for this new bond. Remaining, oh my gosh, I'm getting nervous, this is why Lisa should be doing this. The proceeds will pay the cost of issuance for the bonds and then the remaining proceeds will be used by Andretti for the cost of the construction of their project. This ordinance is a request to approve the issuance of the bonds and the execution of related financing documents. The first reading of this ordinance was held on September nineteenth. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. First of all, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by John, do I have a second? Second by Selena, open up for questions or comments from council? With none? Motion by John, second by Selena, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you very much. Moving on to item nine, zero nine one nine two two A, ninety-six and Allisonville Financing.
Thank you. Again, very similar request for this ordinance. This is related to the ninety-six and Allisonville project with CRG. In February, Council approved that project agreement and at that time we dedicated, or we committed to issuing a bond for that project. Again, similar to Andretti, they're going to be purchasing those bonds, the proceeds will be used for the cost of construction for their project and capital, or in cost of issuance related to that. All of the repayment of this will be from the new tax increment from the project, so no sort of city obligations there. The first reading of this ordinance was also heard at the September nineteenth City Council meeting.
All right, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve? Motion by Selena.
Second.
Second by John, open up for questions or comments from the council? With none? Motion by Selena, second by John, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And I have to abstain. Thank you. Moving on to item ten, R-one-one-one four-two-two C, Rev Financing.
This item is related to the Rev Project Agreement, so that is the condominium project that was approved earlier this summer in the Nickel Plate District. This resolution will create the approval of the new allocation area for Rev's project and will be able to amend the economic development plan to allow for the capture of those funds for the project. So this is a, so both of these items, or this resolution also went before the Plan Commission and Redevelopment Commission for approval for these items as well.
All right, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by John. Second by Selena, open up for questions or comments from council?
A comment?
Yes.
If you please, just clarification, I suppose. This is a city-backed bond, this is not a developer-backed bond.
That's correct.
I just want to make that distinction. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else with questions or comments? Okay, we have a motion by John, second by Selena. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to item eleven, R-one-one-one four-two-two D.
This is more of my normal wheelhouse. So this is...
Are you feeling more comfortable now?
I do, I do. This is related to the Statement of Benefits for Severnado, so we took this project forward in October to expand their project scope with their expansion, and now we need to approve their revised Statement of Benefits. This is what we'll use each year for compliance against their project. If you'll recall, in the project agreement, we approved twenty years at eighty percent of the capture of their personal property, so this is the Statement of Benefits that then would get filed with the county for them to receive the benefit each year of that. Happy to answer any questions.
All right, do I have a motion to approve item number eleven? Motion by Selena, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Cecilia. Open up for questions or comments? Oh, we got a motion by Selena, second by Cecilia, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Moving on to, you need a second? There you go, all right. Well, we'll see, one at a time. Move on to item twelve, one zero one zero two two.
Hi, good evening, Beth Hampshire, Deputy Controller, City of Fishers. It took two of us to fill in for Lisa tonight. This item relates to a bond for the purpose of providing funds to be applied for the constructions of certain road projects and incidental expenses for the City of Fishers, and this will be a bond, one-year GO bond that would not exceed five point five million dollars.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by John, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Selena. Anybody comments or questions from council?
Just one, I didn't have time to read that, Chris, I appreciate you bringing it. Is Florida Road on that, do you know? Jason's not here, is he?
No.
Oh, I can check with Jason later, that's okay, I don't want to take up time. No problem, I'll check with Jason, thanks. I'm just getting tons of, because Britton Falls uses Florida Road to get to the Kroger and all that, so I'm trying to answer questions, so if you could help me, thank you.
Yep.
You sure, Brad? You okay? Okay. Anyone else have questions or comments?
Comment? So, I was grateful to get this list of the road improvements that are intended, or at least like the beginning of a plan of the road improvements that are intended with this bond. Brad, just by eyeballing the list, and again, we just got it a few hours ago, I don't see Florida Road on this list, but I was happy to get it. I think I'm going to direct my question back to you, Chris, if you would. Part of this document, the memo, is referring also to the Barrett Law for the private roads. We've asked a few times to get an update on how that is, has been implemented so far, and I still really would like the details to that, so can we get that, please? So that all fits together in our overall road improvement plan, so...
We had a staff member, Jordan Alexander, who many of you worked with, who transitioned away from the city and was responsible for kind of overseeing the Barrett Law projects. We do have two roads that we're focusing on, that we've been talking with and have a lot of participation with the development community on. As you all are really aware, well aware, the interest rates are doing a lot of funny things right now in the market, and so trying to assess the construction costs for these businesses at a palatable number has been an ongoing conversation that we're trying to work through, and so we're continuing to have those conversations. I'll be happy to provide a more in-depth conversation about the updates with those two particular roads, Fisher's Trade Crossing, as we come back to our next meeting.
Thank you. I'd appreciate a little bit more detail on that, especially what is being communicated to the businesses, please.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Anyone else with questions or comments? Okay, we have a motion by John, a second by Selena, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. Moving on to item thirteen, one zero one zero two two A.
This is again in reference to a one-year GO bond for two thousand twenty-two. This bond is intended to be applied to trail development along with certain equipment and other incidental expenses for the construction connection of the trails, and this one also, as with the other one, would not exceed five point five million.
Do I have a motion to approve? Motion by Selena, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by John, open up for questions or comments from council?
Question, do you happen to know what the MPO application is? I wasn't familiar with that.
So, and you may be able to add in here, the MPO application is the Metropolitan Planning Organization. We do apply to the, for our road and our trail projects. It's a grant process where we are able to receive funds to help us support our...
And do you know when we would know if we were successful in receiving funds?
Yeah.
In January, February?
Beginning of the year.
So I guess one last follow-up question for me about both of these projects. We are issuing the bond kind of before we have all the details like in place, is, just, can you, just a concern about that, that timing, can you address that?
Do you want to answer that, or you? So I think the list that was provided and the information that was provided, both of those lists generally take up all the bond amounts and then some beyond that, right?
Right.
With what we're attacking. When we go out for our MPO funding each year, we're looking to strategically place funds with matches from the MPO program, so oftentimes the MPO, it's an eighty-twenty, ninety-ten match, we're responsible for providing some of those funds. I think what Jason would tell you if he was here is that ideally the funding that's before you out of this bond would go to right-of-way services, design services affiliated with those MPO awards if we are awarded those amounts. If we aren't awarded those amounts, we would then shift those dollars that would otherwise be utilized for right-of-way design service to actual hard cost, engineering cost, and we'd bring some of those design services in-house and try to stretch the dollar as much as we can. So we have more than enough work to be performed, unfortunately because the timing of the MPO, we're just trying to strategically get the financing secured, then once the MPO awards the trail amounts, we kind of allocate back and forth. So it's a, it's a, it's a list that is somewhat definitive, but it's fungible based on the funding and grant opportunities that we receive.
Okay, so the funding has to be, I don't know, secured or locked in so that we can use that for matching opportunities? And can I request also then by the end of first quarter, just as things settle in, like that definitive kind of final report of what the funds will be utilized for?
Absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council? All right, with that, we have a motion by Selena and a second by John, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. These next two, Chris, are they just first readings and public hearings, or do we vote on these?
No, these are actually votes, these are just follow-up actions, so you just approve the general obligation bonds. Now we need to make an additional appropriation to utilize the proceeds, so we have to have a public hearing for both and then just to vote on the resolution, please.
Sounds good, okay, moving on to item fourteen, R-one-one-one four-two-two A.
Right, so this is just a procedural step, as Chris said, to allow the city to spend the proceeds of the first two thousand twenty-two GO bond, and that's all it is, so we can budget for it and spend it.
All right, we'll go ahead and open up for public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this item and this item alone, step forward, state your name and address for the record, you'll have three minutes to speak. Seeing nobody stepping forward, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion to approve? Motion by Selena? You guys are quiet tonight.
Second.
Second by Cecilia.
Open up for comments or questions from council? With none? All right. So a motion by Selena, second by Cecilia, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. Moving on to item fifteen, R-one-one-one four-two-two B.
Okay, and this is the same, so this will be for the two thousand twenty-two one-year GO bond B. This is a procedural step that will allow us to appropriate and spend those funds.
All right, once again, we'll open up for public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, step forward, state your name and address for the record, you'll have three minutes to speak. Seeing nobody stepping forward, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by John. Second by Selena, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. Thank you very much. Moving on to item sixteen, one zero one zero two two B.
Good evening, Monica Halt, Public Health Director, for the record, and I believe tonight we are discussing the sanitary grading scale for restaurants, which you heard about last month on a first read. Since that time, we made a few slight tweaks to the language that we had proposed a month ago. Specifically, we took the timeline out a little bit to buy ourselves a little bit more time, so what you can expect is that we will start issuing the grades with our inspection reports in January. However, they will not be posted until September, and that's really to buy our inspectors time to make sure we can get to everyone and post them all at the same time so that it doesn't get kind of weird with one restaurant having a grade and a whole bunch of others not having a grade.
It's a good, a good idea.
Right. However, they should be available online, so we're building out a dashboard where you should be able to see that pretty easily. It's not quite done yet, but, but we're building all those processes.
Okay, great. Do I have a motion to approve? Motion by Selena, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Crystal. Open up for questions or comments from council?
Monica, when you do the restaurant, then it goes on the dashboard?
Yep.
So you will start posting January, February?
For the, for the dashboard, yeah, and you can see the whole reports, just as, you know, anybody could go in and look at the reports now. Now the reports are tied to a grade, or they will be tied to a grade, starting then.
Anybody else have questions or comments from council?
I just had one quick question, Monica, about if an establishment is, wants to...
Challenge?
Challenge? I was going to say quibble. Challenge their, their grade that they receive, can you just share with us quickly that process?
Yeah, so we'll have a challenge portal essentially on the website, a place where they can go to challenge any specific item, so they'll need to outline which specific items they're challenging on the inspection so that it's not a, I disagree with the whole report, you got to look, what specific items are you challenging? And that will go through a review. It's all laid out in our, in our process that we submitted, and it's available online too. But it'll go, go through a review and they'll, you know, we'll see if they have the evidence to show that the challenge is, was appropriate, we can overturn it. If they still challenge it, then I believe we have them taking it to the Board of Health for a final say.
Well, thank you. So just one of my thoughts was, like, this body doesn't get involved with the execution or any challenges at all, that's all through the Board of Public Health.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else with questions or comments? Okay, we have a motion by Selena, a second by Crystal, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to item seventeen, one zero one zero two two D.
Good evening, for the record, Megan Vukasich, Director of Planning and Zoning. So the item before you is for the final reading of the Sunbeam PUD. So this is, covers various parcels in the area identified here on the map. Those areas are highlighted in red here, and this is really an expansion of the Fishers District area, so I know we've been talking about this Fishers District expansion for a couple of months now, and just some zoning history on the PUDs in this area. So the Yard PUD was first approved in two thousand and sixteen, and that's the area that we know today as Fishers District. Since that initial approval, City Council has adopted both the Slate and the Union at Fishers District. Those were approved in two thousand and one under a PUD ordinance, and then most recently we've seen the Yard Phase Two, which includes the Commons at Fishers District and the Event Center, that was approved in October of this year. So we are back before you for another PUD of the Fishers District, and this is really to cover the remainder area that's undeveloped. So this proposed rezone is really a proactive approach to make sure that the development in this area aligns with that Fishers District, how it's been built out today. This is a line taken from the Fishers two thousand forty plan, so it says mixed-use district that provides a community hub with higher densities and intensities of commercial retail, employment centers, public spaces, institutional uses, and a pedestrian-friendly environment. So I think that sums up pretty nicely what we're trying to achieve and what we've already achieved with the Fishers District area. This did go to Plan Commission last month, they sent a unanimous favorable recommendation to you all, and so we are recommending approval tonight.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to approve? Selena? Motion by Selena, second by John, I assume?
Sure.
Yes, okay. Open up for questions or comments from council?
I just want to say, this was brought before the Plan Commission this month, and we discussed it. I really think that this is a great way for the city to look forward in developing this land in collaboration with Sunbeam and working, putting this into place, this zoning into place, and creating this PUD, I think is the first step of that, and we look forward to working with them.
Anyone else have questions or comments?
Just a comment, certainly appreciate the Plan Commission...
Certainly appreciate the plan commission, what they did. This is a great move for us as a community because originally, if I recall, in the eighties, this was a zone back from the eighties originally, that was, we could have, they had the ability to put up a big box retail facility right there if they wanted to. Then we came along with an overlay to say, no, no, we're going to make you come, take another bite at the apple, come see us first. Well, this is a, kind of now, we've got our standards in place, a PUD that's going to work really well with, with the other communities around there. So appreciate the plan commission doing a great job of, and you, and you as well, doing an outstanding job of getting this where it needs to be. So thank you.
Anyone else from council with questions or comments? Okay, we have a motion by Selena, a second by John. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Moving on to item 18 081522B.
So this is another item that is before you for a final reading. It's been a couple of months since you've seen this item, but this is just for an annual update to our Fisher's 2040 Plan. So if you recall, last year, we did our first five-year update, and as a part of that update, we included a summary and implementation chapter for us to begin tracking all of our action items and the progress of those actions. So I'm not going to go through all of these, but each action has a specific status that can be associated with it. And so staff has gone through all of the 231 actions and I'm giving it a status, an action status, and then also notes if there is anything relevant to include in that section, and then who, what department leads that initiative. So it really helps us use this as a guide in our day-to-day implementation of the Fisher's 2040 Plan. So where we're at today, this is a summary of what has been achieved so far. So the actions are broken up into strategic actions, so those are things that can be started and completed. And then the others are maintenance actions. So these are things that we're all, that we're always doing. And so out of those strategic actions and maintenance actions, we have either started or completed 80% of the actions that have been identified. So this Fisher's 2040 Plan was first adopted in 2016, so we're not even 10 years into it, and we've already achieved 80% of those actions. Of course, during our next five-year update, we'll identify new things to take on, but I think that this is pretty impressive and speaks to our administration and staff. So this is final reading. It did go to plan commission, and they also gave a unanimous favorable recommendation to City Council.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by John. Have a second?
Second.
Second by Cecilia. Open up for questions or comments from council?
I just want to say, this is amazing. I mean, I remember when we first started this process, and it is something that not every community has, and it's very much something that's a, that's a guide and a strategic plan for our community. And so I just commend your staff because to, to do this, to put this together, finalize it, update it, a lot of time and effort, and great job. And it's just amazing that to have this strategic plan in place is something that no, very few cities have. So again, thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments?
Comment? This is my favorite chapter in the 2040 Plan. It's really great to see the progress and very definitive goals and actions, so thank you. President Zimmerman, I have a question about another chapter in the 2040 Plan. It feels like maybe I should defer that until we get through this conversation about this chapter, though.
Okay. Yep, absolutely. Anyone else? All right, we have a motion by John, a second by Cecilia. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Moving on to item 19 111, I'm sorry. Oh, go ahead. You want to go ahead now? Absolutely, absolutely.
Just, I have to bring up the housing chapter again. I just feel like that chapter has been unresolved for a while. Curious about the status of that.
Yeah, so at this time, we don't have any current plans to update that chapter, but are certainly happy to receive any direction from council.
Okay, so I don't know where we go, the action steps here, but that was, we did have a housing, like, study that was invested in with results that were supposed to be integrated into the housing chapter.
So let's do this. And Chris, if we can put, with a nonprofit discussion next month, a work session, let's just go ahead and add that to the work session.
Makes sense.
And just plan however much time we need, make sure we have that discussion.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you for that.
Get that, get that done before the start of the new year. At least an initial dialogue with it. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item 19 111-422.
Yeah, so this is the introduction of a new PUD ordinance. So this is to be called Cynthia Woods PUD. It is located on the southeast corner of 136th Street and Cynthia Road. So you can see here, the proposed concept plan overlaid on the existing aerial. So it does sit just northwest of Britton Falls and near Hunter's Run and Barrington Estates as well. The developer on this is William Trace, and the builder is Piatt Builders. So we have not seen this builder in Fisher's before. This would be a, a new development for them. And you can see the proposed renderings of those homes shown here in the image. So it's a bit of a unique design. They tried to set the garages back from the front of the facade just to make the architecture more appealing, and so staff is, is certainly supportive of this. It is going to be more of a cluster design, so the setbacks are not typical that you would see. This is going to have a minimum distance between buildings, and so staff is supportive of that. It's very similar to what you've seen in Anderson Hall and that development. So that's a, one to look to for that. Here's just an overview of why a PUD is being requested. So density standards are requesting a reduction in. This would be a higher density than what is currently allowed under the R5 district. But what we're getting in return is more landscaping and open space, so they are preserving a large amount of area to the south that will be in a conservation area. And also, they'll be providing pedestrian amenities throughout that open space. All plantings will be native. They've agreed on the pond design to make sure that there's native plantings around that as well, to help the HOA out in the future with maintenance costs. This also is giving us a new product, so this really adds to our mix of for-sale housing types. And then the architecture is elevated, so this will be reviewed through our PUD committee. Rick Lawrence with Nelson &amp; Frankenberg is here, so I will go ahead and turn it over to him to give you an introduction as well.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Rick Lawrence, attorney with Nelson &amp; Frankenberg in Carmel, Indiana. With me tonight is Jesse Pullman with William Trace Development, Todd Piatt with Piatt Builders. William Trace is the proposed developer in association with Platinum Properties, and Paul Rio is also here. And then Todd Piatt is the, or Piatt Builders is the proposed builder of these products that you see in front of you tonight. Megan did a good overview of the project, and we've reached out and talked to almost all of you, so I don't want to take up too much of your time this evening. We have received some comments from both you guys on the council and some staff comments. We have a meeting scheduled with staff later this week to go over those further. Our intent is to wrap everything up so that when we go to the PUD committee and the plan commission meeting on January 4th, we've tied everything up and we've answered all those questions and comments. However, we're here tonight to see if there's any further things we could discuss with you guys and take back as we continue the process with everyone. We have three, well, two neighborhood meetings set. We had one with Britton Falls last week that we went, thought went well. Britton, I mean Barrington Estates is tomorrow evening, and we're trying to arrange one with Hunter's Run to get the neighbors' comments and concerns taken into account also. So with that, as a first reading, I'll just open it up to any questions or comments, and we'll go from there.
Yeah, so anybody, before we have a call for a first reading, just go ahead.
Just comments. I met with them, and I sent it out in a newsletter to Britton Falls. I think you got six pages of responses. And also, we had the meeting, public meeting, in last Wednesday at Britton Falls that a number of people attended. So I think they've got a lot of feedback from Britton Falls.
Okay. Anyone else with questions or comments?
Well, I, I have a couple of things. Number one, I know, I think, and I, I don't think the rendering's been updated. I was wondering if we could get upgraded garage doors on those, kind of like this one here that has the windows on it, but a lot of them don't. I know is one of the things that I was hoping that we could get. The other thing, and this is, is not for you, but it's for our administration. I know we had discussed, and Peter brought it up, about having a meeting with the builders to discuss some of the finds that we have. Have we moved along in getting that meeting together so that way we can create a collaborative process there in order to help everyone succeed?
I don't know, but I'll check on that for you.
Okay, thank you.
Regarding the garage doors, we're working to make sure that either the city standards are what you're looking for, or that we update them to include those additional decorative additions.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I had a quick comments. I just wanted to commend your efforts from a sustainability perspective. We were talking about the trees and that's, and how you're going to try to save as many as possible, and with any that were taken down, that they would be replaced within the neighborhood. So I appreciate that within our conversations. So thank you.
Anyone else?
And I had, I had also mentioned the decorative garage doors and also the rear elevation too, to have a better understanding of what those look like too, to make sure that they are, have some kind of high characteristics and, and also look just as good as the front, so.
We, we have tried to provide some renderings, and we can provide additional renderings to show that the rear elevations are of a standard that you're, you're going to be proud of and notice as you drive by. And the slide on the screen now does show rear elevations, which I think if no one told you they were the rear elevations, you might think those are the front of homes. So we've really tried to take that into account. Piatt Builders over in Carmel has done that there, and this is what they intend to do here too.
What was, what was the price range again? I, I know you told me before, and I...
It's similar to what's in Carmel, although we think it's going to, by the time the building construction begins, it's probably going to be 400 low, probably to 450 average.
Okay, okay. Anyone else?
Question, actually for Councilor DeRimer. I would be interested in learning more about Britton Falls. Six pages of feedback. And certainly, as we move forward, Barrington Estates is coming up, did you say, tomorrow?
Tomorrow evening, yes.
Yeah, just, I mean, I, I know for me, I would be interested in that feedback so that that is something that we keep, that I keep top of mind.
We can provide a summary of Britton Falls information, and then also Barrington Estates and Hunter's Run, and we get to it, we can send it to everybody. We're not trying to hide anything. We want to make everyone as happy as we can, so.
That sounds good. And I just want to commend Councilor DeRimer for doing a good job sharing it with the neighbors so that they're aware and have an opportunity to provide feedback. Thanks.
All right, anyone else?
If I could make a comment, we, the council, if you would, Megan, could you put up the plat or the?
Disappeared.
Yeah, the, the south 20, what is that, 10 acres, right?
South of the creek. Up there, about 10 acres, yeah.
Yeah. If you guys would, just give the developer your opinion on what could be done with that, just so they have some feedback. Because right now, there's nothing set in stone, correct?
Correct.
And, and they keep asking me the question, and I don't want Britton Falls to make the decision, although they probably have the most influence on it. But if you would give them your opinion on just what you think is up.
And what, what has been, because I'd be interested, that might, that'd be my first question. I think that was my first question when I talked with, with you guys initially. What is?
My opinion, they're open to anything. They're looking for guidance on the thing, is that...
We are. Part of the discussion with staff has been, there's part of the greenway, the city's greenway goes along that river there and, or creek. And so we just want to be mindful of that and whether the city wants that to be a part of the greenway plan. And if so, how we move forward with that, or if not, how then Britton Falls gets involved in that area, or it remains with our proposed development. We're open to any discussion or comments anyone has.
Because to Brad's point, this is a unique opportunity.
It is. And, and, and I've gotten comments to everything, leave it alone, make it a dog park, make it a walking park, da-da-da. Anything you can think of, Britton Falls people are in, but, but when I say okay, then the HOA's got to take it over and pay to maintain it. Oh! They aren't going to maintain it for.
Yeah, because the opposite side of that is it becomes, I'm just throwing, I have no idea, I'm just throwing this out there. If it became a city par, you know, small little park, that could draw more people to your backyard, so.
And, right.
So that's where you got to balance that out.
Balance that out, to be fair.
Right.
And, and there is, as they know, there's some restrictions on that 10 acres. The individuals, you see the houses there lined up east and west. Back in 2006, those people were smart enough to negotiate with the lady who owned it at that time and came up with restrictions, what can and cannot be done on that, south of Thorpe Creek. So there are restrictions there already.
So the history of this parcel is, in 2008, a PUD was approved called Creekside Shops, I believe. And the area that the homes are shown in now was expanded and a larger commercial district. What was to be below the creek was to remain R2. And in association with that PUD getting approved, there were three sets of commitments that were issued. One was to Barrington Estates on what was to be done, and we believe that was actually fulfilled in that 2008 time period. One was to the homeowners in Britton Falls that Brad had referenced. Then one was to the city as to who was supposed to enforce things and, and whatnot. We believe the big picture, what we're bringing forward, is going to be able to accommodate those commitments that have already been made, and we're not trying to change the commitments. What we're looking to do is rezone the area above the creek to accommodate the Cynthia Woods PUD. And below the creek would technically remain R2 development, but we're not looking to actually develop residential homes there. We're looking to figure out a way to make that a viable amenity for everyone in the area, or Britton Falls, or the city. We just want everyone's opinion as to how it would, what direction it should go.
Well, I definitely, I agree with Brad. I think it needs to have, you know, some dialogue discussion about what could possibly go there and make sure we partner with the residents around, assuming this gets approved. But, you know, we need to know, no matter what, what direction would be good for that area.
A lot of options, but yeah, Britton Falls is the one that's affected the most, yes.
We don't want to stand in the way of anybody's ideas.
And I, and I've heard that, no, there's, I don't think there's anybody on this council that even think that you do, because I've heard from your presentation. It's not a lot of times we get presentations where there's a lot of green space left, right?
Right.
That's just the reality of, of it. So it's, it's very unique. You're not mowing everything down. You're not changing, you know, radically changing the, the topography there. So it's, it's, it's really good. I think it's, it's a great opportunity. We just got to figure out what that...
Yeah, and I was just going to add that we're happy to have those conversations at plan commission as well, to really figure out what that open space amenity should be.
That makes sense. And it's an environmental sensitive area. When you say, like, there are considerations about what's even feasible there, right?
So that's entirely within a floodplain, and so there are restrictions on what can go there.
Okay, okay.
So Brad, if you could help to, instead of, instead of just hearing from, you know, usually in these meetings, we hear just from remonstrators that are against something, right? That's, I'd, I'd like to hear, even the plan commission, like, what are, what are ideas? So I don't know if, you know, if you want to lead that charge and get this comment.
Yeah, they, they came, as you guys have got, they came up with all different kinds of ideas. ideas.
So there's a lot of options. I haven't seen these, so...
And I think the, and I hope I'm not speaking out of line for Britton Falls, and guys, correct me if I'm wrong, they don't really want it to be a public park because it abuts immediately to the subdivision.
Right.
So from a selfish standpoint, well, that's the wrong word, from a protection standpoint, they would rather take it over as a park, but I'm not so sure our HOA would be willing for the financial upkeep to either farm it, seed it, or whatever would be needed, and take the dead trees out when they fall and stuff like that. So probably, if I was on the HOA, I'd ask for them to deed it to us and figure out how to maintain it, because it's a great asset for everybody that lives in Britton Falls. The problem is, I don't have a pointer, you can't get, let me do it this way, if that's okay, if I don't trip down.
Be careful here.
You can't get to it. This is, if they had bought that house there in the corner, it would've been perfect. Then we could get to it. We really, we being Britton Falls, can't get to this parcel.
What's, just a little bit up, Brad, like there, up, 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 keep going there, right around, is there a way in there?
Oh, those are houses now.
Okay, all right.
If you guys go by that corner, and they give it to us, then we could come here, stay off of Cynthia and go around, because that's common area there, and we could get to it. So I'm not sure we can get to it if they gave it to us.
What about right there, like Todd was talking about?
Yeah, so I'll just add here, it's not showing very well on this aerial, just because it's under construction. There is going to be a connection.
There's gonna be a connection.
Like a road or something.
Yeah, there will be a connection here to this public road. The issue is, is that it would require a bridge over Thorpe Creek to access the northern part of it. Otherwise, it would be the activation of the southern piece. So it's something for us to look at and certainly still have those conversations with the Britton Falls community.
Well, and then I think fairness to Britton Falls, for them to make a decision to, as we go down that path, if we go down this path, is what would the cost ramifications be, right, if they were to take over? Like, what would that maintenance be?
Depends what they want to put in there.
Right. So just, there's a lot to it, but it gives us a direction here. So we need that by Plan for the Plan Commission, definitely to get, you know. All right.
I'll give it first reading.
First reading?
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We don't have any unfinished or new business. Correct, Chris? Nothing there?
Unfinished?
Yes.
If I may, one thing. I'm curious about the status of the Rules Committee. As we are close to the end of the calendar year, I just wanted to raise that as unfinished business. Yes.
Yep, I'll work with council leadership and get any meeting scheduled.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome. All right, moving on to community comment. Anyone wishing to speak, step forward, state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Seeing no one stepping forward, I'll close community comment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Just, since our Fall Creek trustee is here, Doug, would you want to take that as a park? Just throwing the idea out.
You never know. It would be nice if they would consider what the thirty-six-year residents would think about that area versus some that have lived here at a lesser size. But yeah, I'm very familiar with that area.
Well, come with those ideas to Plan Commission.
Yeah, I will.
Okay, thank you. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion by...
Selena, second? David, second?
Thank you. We are adjourned, thank you.